Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Mayor Commission Work Session. Today is March 1st, 2021, and the time is 10:00 a.m. We will dive right into the agenda, and the first item is Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Recommendations. Jennifer Ferriero, Director of Housing and Community Development. Ms. Ferriero?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners, City Administration, and members of the public. Again, Jennifer Ferriero, Director of Housing and Community Development. So this morning, it is my pleasure to share with you the recommendations of the city's Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and we will be discussing a little bit about that committee and what their role was during this process. We'll also talk a little bit about the city's Local Housing Assistance Plan and review the incentives that were reviewed by the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. To give some background in terms of where we are, the city of West Palm Beach is a recipient of state dollars from Florida Housing Finance Corporation for the State Housing Initiatives Partnership Program. That's known as the SHIP funds, and these funds are, in essence, derived, they're known as the Sadowski funds, and they are those funds that we have been trying to, I want to say, battle over the last few years or decades to just ensure that we're getting full funding from the Sadowski funds. Just to give you a little bit of an overview in terms of what the city has received over the last four years, in fiscal year 1718, we've received about $466,000. In fiscal year 1819, it was about $147,000. In 1920, we received $194,000, and in fiscal year 2021, although we were expecting to receive full funding, COVID happened, unfortunately, and so we were depleted and we did not receive any funding to support these types of initiatives. And these funds are, in essence, utilized for the development or the preservation of affordable and workforce housing. And as a requirement of receiving those funds, we are statutorily required to assemble an Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. So I just want to add, whether we receive funding or not, this is a requirement that we have to kind of undertake and go through this process and just prepare for when we do receive funding in the forthcoming years. So the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee is required to consist of at least eight members, out of which six of them must have specific categories, or they have to represent a specific type of group, and we'll talk a little bit about that. The term of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee is in three years, and this board, this commission approved the city's A-hack on October 19th, 2020. So in essence, we are required to have them, the A-hack meets specific designation in terms of kind of their background and what role they represent in our community. So we are required to have an elected official of the city of West Palm Beach. We are required to have a citizen who resides within the jurisdiction. We are required to have a citizen who is in the banking or mortgage industry, a citizen who is an advocate of low-income housing or low-income persons in connection with affordable housing. We are required to have a for-profit developer for affordable housing, a not-for-profit developer for affordable housing, and a real estate professional with a connection to affordable housing. So as a result of those categories and kind of looking at just how many talented, dedicated citizens and residents we have in our city and individuals who are really focusing on the delivery of affordable housing, we were able to put together and make a recommendation for our A-hack members. Of course, we have Terry Murray, who is our chair, and she represents Neighborhood Renaissance; Taya Sullivan, she is our co-chair from Valley National Bank; our elected official, Commissioner Kelly Schoeff, District 1; Andrew Velo Arias from Related Urban; Suzanne Cabrera from the Housing Leadership Council; Craig Glover from North End Rise; Alfonso Costa Jr. from Falcon Group; Jeremy Morris from Mental Health America; and Julian Cover from Cover Realty. And I just really want to thank our A-hack members over the last couple of weeks, they've, a couple of months, I'm sorry, they have been meeting on various meetings, reviewing all of the incentives that we are required to review, and I really want to thank them for their time. It wasn't an easy task, and we met for several hours every day, so I just really want to thank them for their efforts. And of course, also Mark White from our team, who really led this on as well. And of course, Commissioner Schoeff.
Yes, of course, Commissioner.
Thank you for serving on this A-hack advisory board. So what is the purpose of the board and their report? So in essence, the A-hack, they are required to review specific strategies and specific incentives that are going to either increase the development of affordable housing or remove barriers to affordable housing. So they were asked to review these specific incentives and provide recommendations for review by the city's governing body. Again, this is required by the Local Housing Assistance Plan, as required by the state of Florida, and we are submitted to submit this plan every three years, and we will start to review these incentives. So this is the report that was generated. Again, 12 incentives were approved by the A-hack committee, and they were approved on February 10th, 2021. So the first incentive that the group was asked to overview or to discuss was a process for expedited permitting. So this process is to determine the process for approvals for orders or permits for affordable housing projects, and what ways the city can expedite these projects and move them forward. So under the current process, all building permit applications for affordable housing are processed under the expedited permitting review, so they are all expedited, and that specific expedited permitting fee is waived for affordable housing projects citywide. We also have an individual within our city that is designated to assist developers throughout the development process. So what we really want to have is an individual in our department where a developer can call in and say, "Well, I'm having some issues in this specific area. I'm unable to move, there's some roadblocks here. What can you do to help move this process forward?" Or if there's certain questions or certain things, they have an individual within the city that can really help guide them through that process. So we also have someone that is appointed within Housing and Community Development to assist in these efforts. So the A-hack Review Committee, we reviewed these recommendations, and they want to continue to move forward with the existing process. However, they have some additional recommendations that they wanted us to consider. The first one is to provide written policies and procedures for how this process works so that developers have actual procedures that they can look at and for reference once they decide to move forward with these sorts of projects. They also want us to continue to educate developers about the current incentives that are available for affordable and workforce housing. They have asked us to discuss and put together a department meeting, a pre-application meeting, with the developers and with the different types of disciplines that are needed. So for example, there needs to be somebody from Housing and Community Development, someone from Engineering Services, someone from Public Works, just someone to sit down with them and kind of go through that process and have a pre-application meeting so that developers know exactly what it is that they need to bring to the table once they submit their permitting application. And then they have asked, also asked us to continue to work, the different departments, Housing and Community Development, Development Services, and Engineering, just to continue collaborating on the current incentive that we have in place. The second incentive that was reviewed is the review of existing policies, I'm sorry, the review of an existing process in which we review before we adopt any policies, procedures, ordinances, or regulations that may potentially increase the cost of affordable housing. What currently happens is that in our ACM process, in our Agenda Cover Memorandum process, there is a section that indicates if that specific policy or agenda or item has anything to do with housing. If it does, and the individual clicks that it does, it is routed to Housing and Community Development. And so what we look at is, we look at the agenda item that's being brought to City Commission, and we make a determination, is this particular policy or procedure, is this going to increase the cost of affordable housing in any way? So we write that recommendation, and we provide that to you in the Agenda Cover Memorandum. Luckily, we haven't had a situation as of yet where it has, since I've been here, where we have had certain policies or procedural items that increased the cost of affordable housing, but that is the current process that we have, which has worked extremely well. I've received various requests from different departments. We take a look at it, and it's been extremely streamlined in terms of knowing what's coming on the pipeline.
Ms. Ferriero, before you move off of that slide...
Yes.
The, I guess it depends on how loosely you define increase the cost of housing.
Uh huh.
If we approve a project that is going to bring in, say, 600 new employees, theoretically, I mean, supply and demand, as we build as a city for increased demand for housing, by definition, that would increase it. So I assume that these mean direct impacts on the cost of housing as opposed to indirects?
That is correct.
Okay.
So it's more of a policy procedural. So for example, we were going to increase the cost of certain fees that had to do with development, obviously, that would increase the cost of affordable housing. So it's not necessarily projects per se, Mayor. It's more policies, fees, or, like you said, direct costs that may impact or increase that cost.
Okay.
So the A-hack, we went through this process, and the A-hack advises, or advises the city to move forward with implementing the current incentive. The next incentive is the preparation of printed or electronic inventory of locally-owned land that is suitable for affordable housing purposes. As you know, the Housing and Community Development Department, we also oversee all of the city's real estate transactions and the management of city-owned properties. And every couple, every year or so, we come forward to the City Commission, and we identify certain properties that are deemed for affordable housing purposes. And so what that, in essence, what, what we do is, we're required to do this as per statute. So when we bring it forward to you, we make a determination, these could be used for affordable housing purposes, these we may need to sell or surplus or move in a different direction, but this process is already in place. We've had numerous discussions over the last couple of months in terms of, you know, different properties that we brought forward, property that has been donated. So this current incentive is already in place, and we discussed this with the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and they recommend for us to move forward with the current incentive and the procedures that are in place. I'm thinking now, Mayor, with your guidance and should you want us to move forward, that we'll come back and kind of discuss a little bit of, you know, kind of where we are with that and kind of go into a little bit more detail on what that process is in the near The next incentive that the A-hack Advisory Board was asked to move forward with is the allowance of affordable accessory residential units in residential zoning districts. So currently, the city allows for accessory dwelling units in single-family districts and in live-work segments of mixed-use categories. The A-hack Committee moved, reviewed the existing recommendation, and they recommend for the city to continue implementing the current incentive. They also asked us to explore and to look into allowing for accessory dwelling units for affordable housing purposes citywide or for planning and zoning permits. And they have also asked us to look forward to low-interest construction loans for homeowners to be able to develop ADUs on their current sites. This is a process that will take a little bit of time to look at. We'll have to meet with planning, members of the community, and just to determine if that's something that we can do, if that's something that's permissible, but they have, the A-hack Board has asked us to move forward with exploring these potential options. Incentive number five was the allowance of flexibility in densities for affordable housing purposes. Currently, the city is working, as you know, Rick Green, last work session, he presented on an FAR incentive, floor area ratio incentive, within the downtown master plan for projects for affordable and workforce housing. So we are continuing to work through that, and we plan to bring that to you in the forthcoming months. So the A-hack Advisory Board has recommended for us to move forward with researching and finalizing the FAR incentive. They have also asked us to look at other FAR possibilities for other projects citywide, not just within the downtown master plan. They have also asked us to review additional density incentives to include alternative methods such as maximum dwelling units per acre, maybe also exploit that asset, and then to also look at the expansion of TDR programs citywide. Again, this is a pretty large undertaking. We'll have to work with the planning department, work with members of the community, and really narrow in on these specific incentives. That'll take a little bit of time for us to work with, but we will absolutely continue to do that at the request of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. The sixth incentive that we looked at is the allowance of affordable accessory residential units and residential zoning districts, the allowance of flexible lot configurations, including zero-lot line configurations for affordable housing. Currently, again, we have the downtown master plan allows for flexible design with regards to affordable housing by providing additional development capacity for projects that include affordable housing. And we have also began the permitting of micro-units with smaller residential units and square footage and fully functional kitchen and bathrooms. So as you know, there had been some projects that have been approved using the micro-unit, the ability to build micro-units within the city. So what the A-hack Committee recommended was to move forward with implementing the current incentive, and they have also asked us for look at these incentives citywide and not just necessarily within the downtown master plan. Again, these are kind of big undertaking that we'll have to discuss with the planning department, and we'll have to further look into that in the event that you would want us to, if they would accept these incentives moving forward. Incentive number seven, we looked at the development near transportation hubs and major employment centers and mixed-use developments. Currently, the city's comprehensive plan land use element encourages affordable housing near transportation hubs by allowing more flexibility for reduced parking requirements. So currently, the A-hack Committee wants us to continue to implement the current incentive, and they have asked us to also consider non-traditional or alternative types of transportation hubs for development purposes. So again, we'll have to keep looking at some of these strategies with our planning department to look for specific areas where we can make amendments to the existing planning ordinances or the planning or the building capacities within that area. Incentive number eight is reservation of infrastructure capacity, and this is, asks us to review any infrastructure capacity or things that we can look at to reduce the cost for affordable housing projects. Currently, we waive the capacity charges for the water and wastewater for affordable housing, and that was approved in 2016 under Resolution 8316, and this incentive is eligible citywide for all affordable and workforce housing projects. The Advisory Board has asked us to continue to implement the existing incentive, but they also want us to look back and create a different methodology, perhaps doing a sliding scale that will help us better calculate what the waiver should be, and then we should have a limit in terms of what the maximum is that we can waive. So for example, currently, we're waiving the entire fee, and in some situations, it has caused our Public Utilities Department about $400,000, where we have waived $400,000 in capacity fees for some of these projects. And again, that's a fee that we need to charge just to make sure that we have the right capacity to support that project and to support this type of infrastructure citywide. So they have asked us to look at ways of, how do we have a sliding scale, and so we're not just waiving this fee that's required by our, that's required to be able to have the right capacity for water and for wastewater. So we want to look at that. We've been working with Poonam and her team members to further explore that, and we'll be bringing that to you for further consideration. Incentive number nine is a reduction of parking and setback requirements for affordable housing purposes. Currently, we have a 10% reduction in parking requirements when it's an affordable or workforce housing project. We also allow for a 50% reduction for elderly or special needs projects citywide, and we also encourage developers to utilize shared parking as required under Section 9.4 of the city's Court of Ordinances. The A-hack, the A-hack Review Board reviewed these recommendations, and they'd like for us to move forward with the current incentive. Modification of street requirements for affordable housing purposes, that was the 10th incentive that we looked at. Currently, the city of West Palm Beach, we've reduced the engineering fees associated with roadway closure by 25% for those who are developing affordable housing, and the A-hack Committee has asked us to move forward with implementing the current incentive. Incentive 11 is the modification of impact fee requirements, including the reduction or waiver of fees and alternative methods for fee payments for affordable housing purposes. Currently, as you know, the impact fees are associated with any developments that is charged actually by the county, so the city is not receiving those fees. However, we also reduced some of our internal fees. For example, the engineering construction fee is reduced by 25%, and then also we have another fee that is reduced by 25% from 2.5 to 1.875. So the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee recommends for us to move forward with the current incentive. They have asked us also to set some budget or some funding aside from utilizing our housing trust fund so that we can subsidize some of these county impact fees for projects that are affordable or workforce housing. And they have asked us to also work with developers seeking funding to utilize the county's impact fee subsidy program, and that fund, that project or that program is subject to availability, but they should look at that prior to applying for the city's housing trust fund. Incentive number 12 discusses landbags, land trusts, and other types of incentives. So what they looked at is the creation of landbanks for communities to acquire land and maintain ownership of it permanently. They looked at the creation of land trusts as well in order to acquire land and maintain ownership of them permanently, and they've asked us to look at a residential, I'm sorry, a rental and rehabilitation subsidy program. So the A-hack Advisory Board, again, asked us to explore establishing a landbank within our city and also establishing a land trust within our city, and to look at ways that we can establish a rental and rehabilitation subsidy program. Again, these are things that we'll have to really further explore at the, at your direction if that's something that you wanted to look forward to further reviewing and discussing.
What's the difference between a landbank and a landtrust?
So the landbank gives you the capacity to landbank a property, and then the landtrust is the funding that would allow to be able to support those needs.
Commissioner Lambert.
I just didn't understand. So when you say it allows us to landbank, can you just elaborate on that answer?
I'm sorry, I have something right here that's coming up. So when you landback a property, that means that what you can do with that specific property is that it will, the individual that ultimately ends up purchasing the property doesn't have to pay for the value of the land itself. So in allowing to do that, it would preserve or remove the cost of the land, so then the individual is only in essence paying for the actual structure itself. So it's to develop a methodology where we can do that citywide, so that's what they're asking for us to do. And then the landtrust is so that we can have funding to support development for landbanking purposes. So that's what they're asking us to further look at. We have a, countywide, there is a group that can do that. We haven't really done that in the city, not since I've been here. We'll have to really further explore that possibility, but it's kind of a one step. Landbanking and landtrust really allow individuals to afford homeownership and to be able to afford housing and to be able to build equity, but also sharing, having some cost sharing with the actual landtrust and the landbanking method. So again, it just makes the project more feasible and the housing more feasible for the end user.
Yeah, follow.
So is that more on a single-family home?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's more for single-family. There have been some scenarios where it's been in multifamily, but it's mostly for single-family.
Right.
And that was it. So before I move forward on next steps, I just kind of want to talk about this report. So the report that, this report in essence, the A-hack, as you know, they reviewed numerous incentives, and a lot of the incentives, they're just recommending us for us to move forward with looking at other strategies and things that we haven't looked at before. So the approving of the report in itself will come back to you in the forthcoming months. So we'll have the affordable housing, I'm sorry, the Local Housing Assistance Plan is due to the state on May 2nd. So before we submit that report, it'll have to come to you for approval, but it'll also bring in some of these recommendations. Should you accept these recommendations, that will really be your guiding or your green light to us to start working on implementing some of these incentives. So again, we'll have to work with planning department, we'll have to work with our city attorney's office, we'll have to work with members of the community to determine if some of these incentives are the ones that we want to move forward with and what is the best way to do that. And again, there's numerous of incentives that we'll have to take a look at. So again, we plan on coming back to you sometime in April to accept and review these recommendations. I will be sending you a copy of this final report, and it has further details on some of the things that we discussed today, and we'll come back to you for approval. And that is actually, Fay, as you wanted us to allude to, that is a direction that we're asking from you is to review these specific recommendations in the report and then coming back to you in the next couple of weeks to determine if you'd like to move forward with these recommendations. And that concludes my presentation, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Very good. Thank you for a very thorough presentation. Board members, any questions? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. That was a fantastic presentation. I have a few questions. I guess my first one, I wanted to ask you about the transportation hubs. You mentioned that they might be wanting to look at non-traditional hubs, and I'm just wondering, I know that in our city, there are specific areas that you are probably referring to where we have transportation, where we have trains, where we have trolleys and maybe bus stops. And I wonder, then, some of the other items, like landbanking and landtrust, sort of referred to citywide. So I was just wondering how the two kind of work together, that, you know, are we trying to, I guess, open up the areas where we are able to have more affordable and workforce housing, and then looking at additional transportation methods, or is that something that maybe would be for another group to talk about? I'm just curious, because obviously, not everybody has a car, and it's great to be able to walk to transportation, so I know that that's not available citywide.
So these incentives, again, some of them will be citywide because it really depends on what we're looking at. And as it relates to the transportation hubs, that's really more targeted, again, in locations where there is more opportunities for, you know, transit hubs. So for example, if we wanted to look at locations near, if there was another Brightline station, or if we wanted to look at a location near the Magonia, what's that, the Tri-Rail station, and there was other opportunities for development near those areas, we'll look to incentivize development within those areas. So that's more strategic in terms of transportation hubs and where they're currently available. And the other methods, some of them, again, will be citywide if you want us to look at accessory dwelling units. Maybe there's a way to look at that outside of just these specific boundaries that they're currently at. So it really just depends on what specific strategy we're looking at. But yes, this would be more towards where are our existing transportation hubs and how can we incentivize development within those specific areas.
Follow-up, Commissioner? You said you had several questions, yep? Oh, okay, that's fine. Commissioner Peruzzi?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. Prior to being up here, I was a two-term member of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, and I see that some of the issues that they're still discussing are things that we discussed. However, I see that we have implemented some of the things, it's just they're calling for maybe tweaking some of those incentives. Particularly with regard to the expedited permitting, I remember we had long discussions when I was on it about how we make sure that things don't fall through the cracks and to make sure that those permits do actually get expedited. And we had suggested, you know, doing some sort of a stamp that says expedited or affordable housing project or something, just so that through the process, there were no snags, it wouldn't get held up. And I don't want to get too much into the weeds, but I was just wondering, is there some process for identifying these projects?
We do have a stamp, so now I know that it's you, Commissioner. We have a couple of those in our office. But yes, currently, we have a stamp, and then every time a developer submits an application, there's a manual process, just, so there is that stamp, and then we will also send an email to the planning department and to the construction department, to construction services, and let them know, this particular project, here is the permit number, just to reiterate, it's an affordable housing project. So there is a person within our department that follows up on all of these projects to make sure that they're being expedited. With that said, we're trying to move away from a manual process. So once the new system is implemented, that Rick is currently working on, those will be flagged. So anytime an affordable housing project comes in, it'll be flagged, and so the different disciplines will know that it is expedited. But, you know, currently, since that's not currently in place, we do have a designated person that really follows up, that the developer can contact and say, "We submitted this, there's, you know, is it falling through the cracks? Where are we with it?" So there's that follow-up that's conducted within our department.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you for the very thorough presentation, and thank you to Commissioner Schoeff and the committee for their review of these incentives. It's great to see the feedback on them and the tweaking and some new ideas come forward. My question relates to a, I'm curious if, as a city, if we have a plan on where we'd like to see some of these affordable housing projects take place so that it's not all condensed into one area, but that we're looking at the city as a whole, and I And I certainly understand that some of that has to do with where developers are able to, you know, find property to do this. But I'm curious if we have a strategic plan as well.
So that's, one of the ways that we're doing that is through the new FAR incentive for the downtown. So what Rick Green and his group presented last week will help with that. We looked at, we wanted to make sure that we have additional affordable workforce housing within our downtown. It is one of our most high-cost, you know, areas within our city. And if a developer wanted to buy out, out of that requirement for their specific project, they can't, they can only buy out within the downtown area because we don't want them to say, okay, well, let's move, let's produce this in the north end, or let's produce this elsewhere where housing is already slightly more affordable than, within our downtown. So that's one strategy that we're, that we're looking to do that. Of course, we'll have to look at, you know, outside of downtown, which is one of the recommendations of the AHAAC board, to look at these sorts of, of incentives outside of the downtown. But that's, that's one strategy in which we're doing that.
Follow-up.
Yes, thank you. And I think that that's important because I want to make sure that we're paying attention to, you know, some of the downsides of gentrification and that we're looking at ways that we can make sure that people aren't spending a disproportionate amount of their income on housing. And one of the incentives, the, the landtrust, I think, you know, it seems like that goes towards that because that was for single-family home ownership as well as these multifamily units that you've been discussing. And so I, I don't know if there's other incentives that, that lead to that, but that would be something that'd be very important to me.
Absolutely. And I'll say, these incentives are very prescribed. So these are the things that we have to review as per Florida statute. It doesn't mean that there is not a variety of other things that we're currently implementing or other programs. The advisory board also looked, wants us to continue to meet and look at other things that, that we can do to support affordable housing purposes, programs, initiatives. Again, this was very prescribed, just to adhere to what the state's requirements are, but there are other things that we'll be looking at in the forthcoming, in the forthcoming months.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Paduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. I remember when I was on it, that it was a very brief prescribed period of time that the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee was actually in session or, or available to do things. It was like a couple month, three-month period of time. And then it ceased to exist and they had to reappoint it the next time, you know, around. Is the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee still operating that way?
No, the requirements have changed for it. So they have to be active for three years. And every year we have to go back and give them an overview of the incentives, how they're working out, what progress we've made, where we are with our projects. So that has changed under the current state laws.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I had a question about the rental and rehab subsidy program. It seemed like most of these incentives, I guess, pertain to new projects. So I wasn't sure, I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit about that, if that was sort of a subsidy for maybe a, a structure that's already existing or, and have we identified any of those?
I think what they were looking at is a rental subsidy program where we can assist individuals with, or current landlords with rent, rehabilitation to their rental structures. That's one thing that they wanted us to look at because we have a lot of substandard housing within our city. And then in essence, we could turn those properties and, and make sure that those properties don't rent their units for, over a specific rate. They were also looking at a rehabilitation subsidy program, which is a program that we already have, which is a rental, I'm sorry, which is a rehab program for those who meet specific income criterias and then need extensive repairs to their, to their housing. So we, we have one of those programs already now given because of the shortage of funds that we received from the state. We haven't really received anything. We don't have the funding to actually fund the, the program itself. But we have an infrastructure in place where we provide those kinds of services to residents in our city.
Board members, any other questions? Commissioner Lambert.
Mayor, just a comment to say thank you so much for making this a priority and doing such a thorough job on this. I think that this is one of the top issues plaguing our city and, and one of the ones that I'm appreciative that we're thinking about strategically. So thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Okay, thank you again, Ms. Freo.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Mayor, if I could, I, I thought you saw my.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I, I would like to just add a couple of comments and, and observations to the record here as part of this discussion. You know, putting on my former hat as the Director of Housing and Community Development and having been involved in preparing the five-year, three-year housing assistant plan throughout my career, just a couple of things that kind of jumped out at me and I'm glad to see that we're allowing for some time between this work session and the April 19th work session with some of the recommendations, you know, as we sit here with staff that we need to vet through more carefully from my perspective. You know, when we look at the exploration of a construction loan for accessory dwelling units, I think that begs the question whether it is appropriate for city staff to get involved with setting up construction loans for private residency and then setting that precedent and what it does to our workload. A couple of other of the recommendations that I want us to look further at, vetting through relates to the establishment of, of a land bank and a landtrust. Those particular types of, of initiatives, I think just from experience are better suited for the nonprofit or public sector to be engaged in. We already have a, probably, I think they are countywide, the Community Land Trust. And that's their area of expertise. And I don't think that we should compete with them in looking at trying to establish that in the amount of work that is involved with a municipality setting up a landtrust or a landbank. And I think a, a number of the programs that we have, particularly on the real estate management side, dovetails very well with this. So if we're looking at landbanking wherein you write down the value of the purchase of the land so that the overall construction of the house is more affordable, that's a policy change that we can look at as opposed to setting up a whole nother entity of landbanking. And the other component that we have to look at when we're looking at from a workload standpoint, and we just had some of this discussion here, looking at what these additional initiatives outside of a municipality would do on your current workload as we take on new initiatives, looking at that we're in, we're in a scale-back mode in terms of staff. So to put recommendations on the books that get adopted, that we are not going to be able to effectively manage, whether it's through HCD or Development Services, that's something as the city administrator, you know, I'm going to be taking a very, very close look. And let me just state, affordable housing is near and dear to me. That's where I cut my teeth on my career. However, we got to balance what is appropriate for us to take on, what is appropriate to leave for the nonprofit sector, what is appropriate for the private sector, how can we partnership and still meet all of the other priorities that we have to carry out.
All right, Ms. Johnson, thank you for those comments. Can I have you get with Ms. Freo and the Advisory Committee and sort through those so that when it comes back to us on April 19th, it's been fully vetted?
Yes, sir.
So what we get on the 19th is something that has been vetted at both the staff level and at the Advisory Committee level. Please. Is that a yes? Ms. Johnson?
I said, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
All right.
Mayor, may I add briefly before we, and Faye, I agree with everything you stated. A lot of the things that we're looking at are very burdensome in terms of workload. And yes, a lot of them, we should not be taking on, but we should work with other nonprofits or organizations that can do this. But this, this report is just a recommendation that they have in terms of asking us to further explore these methods. If these methods don't work, or we're not able to move forward with them at the appropriate time, or this is the rationale as to why, I think the, the AHAAC would be open to that understanding. And, but I, I just want to add that this is not a requirement that we have to implement this specific incentive. It's just that we will further explore it. But I a hundred percent agree with you, Faye, in terms of your comments and the things that you stated.
Understood. And I didn't want to be remiss as the city administrator and former housing community development director to not put comments in the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Faye.
All right. I believe the record is complete. Any other questions from Commissioners? Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you again. Item two, update on COVID-19 small business loans. Mr. Fauna.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners, Administrator Johnson. So back in early, early on in the COVID response, the city implemented a COVID-19 Economic Assistance Program for small businesses. And we were one of the first out of the gate. And Chris Ruge, who was our Director for Economic Development, he's in the room, also played a key role in implementing this program. So I wanted to recognize his contributions as well as others who were involved, including the, the CRA and the Downtown Development Authority and our private sector partners that I'll talk about. So just to refresh your memory, this was approved through Resolution 120. There were microloans from between $5,000 and $10,000, interest-only payments for the first 12 months. That interest rate was three, is 3.25. The funding, again, was provided by the city, the CRA and the DDA. And we did get a small grant also through the Knight Foundation, I think it was $25,000. Is that right, Chris?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, all right. $50,000 for the Knight Foundation. And then the city, along with the Urban League of Palm Beach County, who we partnered with, conducted the underwriting on the loans. And then we partnered with Valley National Bank to do the loan issuance and provide the loan servicing. And that has gone well. Some of the criteria that was used, of course, they had to be based in the city, operational for 18 or more months, had gross revenues under $1 million, liquid assets under $150,000. So here you see some of the numbers. We had 127 completed applications that we received online. We had a lot more that were incomplete, that never actually finished the process, but the ones that were completed were 127. Forty-seven of those were denied or withdrawn. A lot of times they were out of the, they weren't even in the city, or they just went through their application because they found other ways to, to get funding. Thirty-three remain unfunded and then 47 got funded. Here you see a map, the distribution of where these loans were provided. So you see it's pretty well distributed. We obviously have a cluster within the downtown area and the area in Northwood Village where a lot of the restaurants and merchants reside. And because we had funds that were specifically targeting downtown and the Northwood area through both the CRA and through the Downtown Development Authority. I think Rafael Clemente's here. Rafael, thank the Downtown Development Authority also for stepping up quickly and being a part of this program. Oops, sorry about that. There you see kind of the budget was $259,000 in general funds and grant funds, including the $50,000, $60,000, excuse me, there was another $50,000 on top of the $259,000, which was from the Knight Foundation. $60,000 CRA funds, 150 DDA funds. Total loans that were issued were $450,915 in loans. This, this, this statistic, I'm pretty proud of in terms of our participation from minority business community, 46% self-identified as minority-owned businesses. And then 51% self-identified as women-owned businesses and several were both minority and women-owned businesses. So a large participation from our, both our minority and women-owned businesses.
Before you move off that slide, Mr. Fauna, let me commend you and the others for collecting that data. What we have found in, during COVID is that certainly with respect to the testing that was done at the beginning of COVID, and now I think to a lesser extent with the administration of vaccine, there's been a failure to collect data on race and ethnicity, which to me is a shame because everything we hear indicates that those communities of color are most adversely affected. And the only way that we as a city as, and it's really not the city doing it, it's the county and the state, can, I think, ensure that we are either getting testing to the right people or the vaccine to the right people is collect this information. And so I'm glad that we as a city, at least we're collecting the information. And, and there, there will be lessons learned. I mean, after we get on the other side of the mountain, presumably there'll be some kind of actor action reported, certainly at our level and hopefully even at the state and federal level so that we can, and, and prove our performance with the next pandemic. And there will be another one, maybe not in my lifetime. But it's so important that we, we have to be intentional, I think, in, in terms of devising solutions which are equitable and fair. And the only way to do that is to collect data about racial identification and ethnic identification so we can truly, truly understand whether we are doing our job from an equitable standpoint. So thank you for collecting that information.
Yeah, and having an online portal certainly helped and make it easy to collect the data. But, and, and to grow upon that point a little bit, we also had lessons learned on some of the challenges that minority businesses face with some of these programs, whether it was this one or the PPP. And a lot of it had to do with the amount of information that's required and the type of information that businesses should have, but some small minority businesses don't always have. And so I've been working with Frank Hayden and some other private sector groups to come up with another program that will also help with providing more technical assistance to these small businesses so that they know the types of documentation that they need to keep in, in order to be able to take advantage of these programs when they come out. Because that certainly was a challenge, even, even with these numbers, there was other folks we could have helped if they would have had the right documentation in place. So here's the fun part. We did a survey recently of the folks who received the, the loan and we got a 40% response rate, which is pretty good. Eighty-nine percent responded, either they were very or highly satisfied with the program. Again, 89% were very or highly satisfied with the online application process itself. A hundred percent rated the program critical to maintaining their operations. Fifty-three percent said the program was most used for payroll. And then a 37% was most used for rent. I think we had a couple that used it also for inventory and other uses. Eighty-nine percent said they were able to retain jobs because of the program. Now, we also threw a question in there about a grant program for HEPA filtration systems. That is one thing that we can use some federal dollars that we got. And we got a 79% response rate that they would be interested in, in using a program like that. So we've got a number of options of how to use these CDBG COVID funds. And that was one thing, since we were doing a poll, wanted to see if there was going to be an interest in us moving forward, something like that, if we choose to do so, if the city commission chooses to do so.
Mr. Fauna, while I appreciate the response rate, it was still less than 50%. Are we, was there any effort to do any follow-up for those who did not respond? Just to see if we could elevate that number?
Yeah, I mean, I, I did send a follow-up email requesting that they, personally requesting that they respond. And then I bumped it up a little bit, but.
Okay.
Yeah, for the purposes of getting it on this agenda.
No, 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 I appreciate it. And even though we may not have the information now, if, if maybe an additional step can be taken to see, but, because again, these are lessons learned.
Sure.
And if you could make another round to try to get information for those who are non-responsive.
Absolutely. Some comments we received, "Thank you very much for your assistance. The process, at times I'm cumbersome, but it worked. The process certainly should be streamlined. I'm pleased with the results and the terms. Thank you so much for the assistance." You see one that says that they were able to really save seven, seven employees. So that's, that was huge. We had lost 75% of our business and without the loan, we probably would have closed. Then there's a couple of comments regarding the forgiveness of the loan, the future forgiveness. And I know this body has asked about that. So we wanted to make sure we captured some of that data. And there was, I think, one or two more that said something similar within their comments about requesting a forgiveness of the loan. I just to add, you know, this first 12 months, the, it was only interest only. So the payments that they've had to provide have been like $25 a month. And none of them, including, there was one, there was one business that did go out of business, but they're still paying. So all of them have, have been, continue to pay their loan. And again, there was lessons learned. We had, we had a great relationship with Valley National Bank. They did a, a, a nice job with us. You know, being a government entity, there were some cumbersome processes. We had to go, the mayor has to sign every document. So we have to go through a, a process of going to our legal department, getting the, reviewing all the documents, then it goes to the mayor, then it goes to, a lot of back and forth between us and the bank, but we. between us and the bank. But we managed to make it work. So there are some lessons learned that we can tweak if we move forward on another program similar to this. But a couple of policy questions for this body to consider. One is the loan forgiveness itself. And I'll have to look into how that would work exactly. Because the way we did structure this with Valley National Bank is the city took out a certificate of deposit, or a couple certificate of deposits, which are locked in for five years, which is the loan term period. And so if the loans are forgiven, we may still have, you know, we'll still have those monies probably in the CD. And we really won't have access to them, other than, we can pull them out, I guess, but then we're not going to have the, the loan, excuse me, the CD terms won't, won't apply anymore. Also, there's still a little bit of money left that we could apply. So if we went to a grant program, and we're going to forgive these loans, then I would just say we look at the next two or three in line and just issue, issue a grant based on their application. And we'll have to reevaluate it because some time has passed. And then whether there's a desire to move forward with investigating this HEPA filtration program under CDBG COVID funds that we received. And we wouldn't take a lot of that, because we get, we have other things that we want to fund with that program. But maybe we can provide some assistance to some of these businesses that want that particular program. So that's kind of the policy questions that I'm putting before this board and the mayors. And any questions you may have, I'll be happy to answer them.
Well, my initial thoughts on the loan forgiveness is to tread lightly. You know, we are a governmental entity. These are monies that we didn't necessarily have budgeted. And I'm not sure I want to rush into, to that. Do we have any idea, any statistics on repayment rates? How many are paying in accordance with the terms of the loan documents?
Yes, they're, none of them are default. As I mentioned, even somebody that went out of business is not in default, so.
Okay, okay. But I'm, I'm open to hearing from commissioners their thoughts. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. I really appreciate the effort that went into the survey and collecting this data. The funding that, if you could go back to one of the first slides, where it outlined who put in what funding? Yeah, that right there. The 259,000, that came from our general fund, is that correct? And then you've been talking about COVID funding from, I guess, federal funding as well, but that's not included in the 259?
Correct. Now, we, we put this out before Congress even was allocating anything.
But we do have additional funding that's coming in now that we're looking to utilize and put a plan behind as well?
Correct.
Okay. While I certainly want to make sure that the organizations, the companies that received these funds are good stewards of these funds, you know, I think the 259,000 is a good investment for us to spend on, on supporting our local businesses. And I'd be in favor of providing them as grants, if that's the direction you're looking for. Or is that, I mean, is that what you're asking us? Is what's our feeling on that?
Yes.
Commissioner Beduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it's my understanding that all of these businesses also had, probably had access to the Paycheck Protection Program through the Small Business Administration. And those funds certainly were forgivable. My understanding is it's a simple application, especially if you're a small business, and you can have them completely forgiven. You know, do you have any numbers with regard to the application, applicants of this program? And how many of them also applied for the Paycheck Protection Program?
We may have that out to look. Part of the application process did require them to answer the question that they have applied for other resources, including the PPP. And we sent them to the FAU business, business, business portal that the FAU had set up that would help businesses apply for some of these other resources. So we did direct them to that. And, you know, they, they had to answer whether or not they did that. I'd have to then go back and look and see if there's any other data that supports it. But pretty much all of them answered yes, because that was one of the conditions.
Right. So, and follow-up, Mayor?
Yes.
So, you know, these businesses have, have had funding that has likely been forgiven or will be forgiven. I would, with $259,000 from the general fund, I would agree with the mayor that let's, let's tread carefully and exercise some discretion in immediately, you know, looking to forgive those loans also, when they've probably had the opportunity to have obtained forgivable loans, you know, outside of this program.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. One question on that topic. I was wondering, I can't remember, when we put out this grant or loan, I mean, did we call it a loan? Did they think they were applying for a loan? Or did they think there was a chance that it might be?
Yeah, it was definitely called a loan. However, and I see Rafael Clemente, I'll ask him to come up, because I think there was some distinction possibly with some of the DDA loans or the DDA's board discussion on, in terms of forgiveness. So Rafael, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Mayor Commissioners. Rafael Clemente, Executive Director of the Downtown Development Authority. So when, when the city created the structure for the program and the DDA Board contributed, I think, two dispersments of dollars after we exhausted the first round, there was discussion of whether or not this becomes a forgivable program. However, that decision was not made. So I would definitely have to take this to my board. However, thinking about how we have dispersed funds to support businesses in good times and bad. You know, we have used our business development dollars primarily as grant, as grant money to do facade improvements and to do leasehold improvements inside structures in order to give businesses better footing to succeed over time. You know, I, I think about this fund in the same way. Most of these grants were between $5,000 and $10,000, which is roughly what our facade grant program is, which is paint, signage, awnings, lighting, et cetera, on the exterior of a business. So I, I think my board would definitely be amenable to considering it if the city goes in that direction. However, your decision as, as, you know, the biggest contributor to this and the one, the entity who created the structure for the program will certainly weigh heavily on how my board would go, would be my, my gut sense. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. Can you talk a little bit about what criteria we put in place on the application? I mean, we, we vetted these organizations. It looked like there was, I think you said 40-something that withdrew or didn't qualify. So we definitely had that in place.
Yeah. In terms of criteria beyond this, there were some other criteria. For example, they, they couldn't have any liens on their property, if they owned their property, had to have a business license with the city. So there was some other minor criteria, but this was the, the big criteria was this, that you see here.
I mean, I, I've certainly heard from many small business owners. And so here, they had to have gross revenues under $1 million. So this is truly impacting our small businesses?
Yes, definitely. You know, and it doesn't have to be an all or nothing. I think one thing, one thing that could be consideration would be, let's say, if they pay half of the amount, and then the other half is forgiven. That's an example of something we can look at. Because there is a cost in terms of us administering this program, even though Valley National Bank is doing a lot of it. We still have to keep the records and kind of follow through with this for the next five years. So that's something else to consider, is, is kind of a hybrid.
Do we know what other municipalities or governmental agencies are doing? What did the county do when they got money on the street?
The county provided a mostly grant, a grant program. Theirs was quite large, and it was with the federal monies.
Yeah, it wasn't their dollars.
Right, correct. It wasn't their dollars.
Let me ask this, and maybe Ms. Johnson can weigh in. When we applied for reimbursement to the county for monies, did we apply for reimbursement of the two, what is it, 250,000?
I'll have to check. I believe that was in there, but I'll have to check, yeah.
Do you know, Ms. Johnson?
I don't recall off the top of my head, Mayor.
We can, we'll look at that.
All right. You know, if we're going to get reimbursed by federal dollars, then I may look at this much differently. But if it's just our general fund, it's coming out of our general fund, we're not going to get reimbursed, then, then I've got some returns. But if it's part of a package we're looking to get reimbursed for, then it's a different conversation.
Chris, I think Chris Ruge wanted to say a couple of things.
Chris Ruge, Executive Director of the Community Redevelopment Agency. Mayor, to your point about what other municipalities are doing, it was something, there, there was a lot of listservs that were out there, I think, through the Mayor's Innovation Project, that I believe you're part of, part with, National League of Cities. When this was, when the pandemic was first taking hold, there was a ton of information sharing going on between cities. And we mimicked our program very similar to places like Seattle, Philadelphia. I think there was a couple of places in North Carolina. There wasn't too many in the state of Florida that we were modeling a lot of these recovery programs after, because they initially all started as loans. Everybody was sort of scrambling on. We were about middle of the road compared to other municipalities that were doing loan or grant programs. The higher programs were around 25,000. So we came in about 10, again, trying to affect as many small businesses as possible. And Commissioner Lambert, to your point about the 47 denied, a little bit more on that criteria, the lion's share of those were primarily because they were outside the boundaries of the city. The next one was, we did have a credit criteria, and we tried really, really hard to help everybody. But sometimes the credit scores just didn't allow that to occur. So that was probably the follow-up one.
Okay, before we can give, or before I'd be willing to give further direction, I would need an answer to that question as to whether it was part of our application package to the county for reimbursement. So maybe we could circle back around? After we have that information. But meanwhile, I do think this is a very good story to be told about how this city addressed COVID-19. And so can you work with Communications and see if there's something that could be put together which captures a lot of this information here? Maybe even, you know, two or three of those comments? Because I think this is a, something that our citizens should be aware of how their municipal government stepped up. And we should get the word out. I'll put it in, you know, one of my email blasts or something like that.
Yeah, we were, definitely the first in the county, and I don't, we may have been the first in Florida. I don't remember seeing any other examples in Florida that quickly, so.
Yeah. So let's, let's work on it. Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I just have one question about this slide, the filtration program. You mentioned that that was one of the things that would qualify for the money to be used for. What are other things? Was there, is there a category of things that it can be used for?
Yeah, we'll be bringing that to City Commission at some point soon. But yeah, there's a number of things we can use it for. One of the things we're looking at, working with our fire rescue and emergency management team, is the ability to be able to distribute, if we get the vaccines in our hands, distribute vaccines in a very localized manner into targeted neighborhoods. And that would be one of the costs that we would use the CDBG funds for. And there's some other things we're looking at that we'll bring forward.
Yeah, Commissioner Beduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think my opinion of the matter would certainly change if we were being reimbursed by the federal government. But one question I did have, because it was mentioned that the county had some grant programs that weren't structured as loans, but as grants. Would our businesses located within the municipal limits of the city of West Palm Beach have been eligible to apply for those county grants? Or were they limited to, were those county grants limited to unincorporated areas?
No, they, they could apply.
They could?
Yes. And those were, that was county money, but it was federal money that the county had.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. When you're getting us that updated information that the mayor had asked for, I'm curious if we could get, I'd love to know which of these businesses fall outside of the CRA? I think that it's important that we're looking at those businesses as well, because while I'm, I appreciate everything we do in the CRA, I want to make sure that our businesses outside of the CRA receive support as well. And, and one other comment about, you know, my desire to see this as a grant rather than a loan is, you know, I think that when we did this, you know, in, I think it was May, June timeframe, when we first?
Like around April is when, yeah. We started in March to put it together in April, right.
And I recall the phrase that we were using a lot was flying the plane while we're putting it together. I remember that. And I think that, you know, had COVID lasted three months, six months, you know, that'd be a different story. But we're here a year later. And I think that our businesses are still hurting. And I think that, you know, I'd like us to continue looking forward to possibly providing them as grants.
To somewhat answer your first question, over half the funds that were spent were spent outside of DDA/ CRA districts.
Great, thank you.
At least over half of them.
And going back to the question I asked, which, Mr. Ruge, I appreciate your responding to what other governmental agencies were doing. And it sounded like most of them were structured as loans, if I heard you correctly?
Yes, generally, they were loans and grants. There was a lot of hybrids between the two. The grants were a little bit trickier, just in order, and that was more for like audit purposes, to make sure that we were distributing them quickly. So that's why we went ahead and structured the loan program, because it seemed to get it propped up. And again, to Commissioner Lambert's point about not really knowing what was going to happen with everything, the loans seemed to be the safest way to distribute tax dollars on a quick basis, and still provide the level of accountability that I think everybody was comfortable with.
The other question I have is, I know we got, what, $50,000 from the Knight Foundation? Were there any strings attached to that, suggesting that we'll give you this if you do loans? Or what, what, what were the terms of that?
Correct. If I recall correctly, the, the terms were to essentially take the 50,000 and put it towards small business support in minority communities. And it was basically to go alongside with our program that was currently, they could just simply add more funding to an existing program. And that was the attractiveness of adding more money to a program that we already had underway.
All right. So they didn't specify whether it had to be long?
I'd have to go back and look at the grant agreement, but I don't believe so.
All right, let's just make sure, because I don't want to have any unintended consequences if we do change. But anyway, we'll, we'll wait to get information as to whether that's something we'll get reimbursed for from the county.
Mayor, if, if I may, now, we have that spreadsheet already prepared, and it's very detailed on what we requested reimbursement from the county. The total is, I think it's 801,000, and about 500,000 of that is from the general fund. But given that the information is already detailed out, what's the preference of the board? Of having this come back at the next work session for a follow-up discussion on it? What's, what's the pleasure?
Yeah, I mean, because I think staff is still looking for guidance. So we could do it at the next workshop.
Okay, thank you.
Disseminate that information to the commissioners as soon as you can, so they'll have time to think about it, digest it.
We'll send it out promptly.
Thank you. Anything else, commissioners? Commissioner Lambert?
And just to clarify, so we've already applied for all those funds and submitted a plan to the county?
Yes. When we submit that, back in December?
Yes.
And we're now in March?
Yes. Back in December, and we've had several follow-up email conversations and verbal conversations with the county on the status of it. The very latest was that they have confirmed that our recent application for reimbursement is complete, that they don't require any further information from the city. It's going back through a number of reviews to make certain that, you know, everything is in order. And we're just waiting for them to inform us how much of that is going to be reimbursed, and when will the check be cut?
And you can imagine, I, I would imagine that our request, us being the capital city, was probably larger than any other municipalities in the, in the county. But anyway, so we're just waiting for the check. Anything else? Any, I don't, I don't have anything under Mayor's, well, I do have one thing. And that is, as you may recall, thank you, Mr. Fauna, for, for a very fine report. As you may recall, the last City Commission meeting, I did designate the first Monday in March, which is today, as COVID-19 Memorial Day. And so we, we have crossed, unfortunately, the 500,000 lives lost in the country because of COVID-19. So as you go about your, your, your business today, let us, let us not... about your business today, let us not lose sight of the sacrifices that were, you know, the ultimate sacrifice that was paid by so many of our loved ones in the country, and to a lesser extent, but not, less important even in our city. And the flags are, I think they're continuing to fly at half-mast, correct, today? Anyway, I know they were last week. They were flying at half-mast for the COVID-19 victims, not because of anything else. Okay, so thank you all very much. I mean, I don't have anything else. Now, commissioners, do you have anything for the good of the body? Okay, thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.